Thankfully, a couple of her sermons the last few weeks. And basically she talked about, you know, gods of our hope, you know, in, in God in the midst of hard times. And I really felt like it was appropriate for what we were going through just right now with the pandemic. But the structure of the book of Jeremiah, they, he's like the weeping prophet or like the, he's known as like the really sad prophet. And really, the book is very sad in a way. It's very stark. You know, you really see God's judgment, you know, you see a harshness and pretty much you see in the book of Jeremiah, the culmination of many things going wrong, written out and explained. So in the very beginning of the structure, so I'll kind of, I'll kind of do an overview. And then I also took some screenshots of the Bible project that which really goes deeper and it shows like different pictures, but this is just a preliminary. Basically, chapters one through 24, it goes, it documents the the unfaithfulness of Israel. So, and Jeremiah, he equates this unfaithfulness with marital unfaithfulness. And that's a common theme all throughout the Old Testament. You know, the, the metaphor of God's covenant with Israel, as we remember, you know, and he makes his covenant with Abraham and Abraham's descendants. And, you know, in a polytheistic world where they, they serve and worship many gods, you know, the covenant with Israel or with Abraham's descendants, the agreement is you will only worship me. And they have like this kind of, you know, marital type of covenant. And all throughout the Old Testament, it's kind of, the relationship between God and Israel is related as a marriage. So in the beginning chapters of Jeremiah, he really equates the fact that Israel, even though they do go to the temple and they do worship, outside of the temple, they're actually worshiping other gods. So they worship Canaanite gods, they worship, you know, Babylonian gods, they worship, you know, all Asherah and Hittite, you know, gods. They, they kind of pretty much synchronize all these other gods with the God of Israel. So in the beginning Jeremiah is laying it out and he's saying that Israel has been very unfaithful. When we look closely at God's anger and judgment to Israel, he's also really upset at the rampant social injustice that comes out of them serving other gods. So one of the things that they do, and one of the things, one of the main things that Jeremiah accuses them of is neglecting widows and orphans. And all throughout the Old Testament, that is God's trigger. If you read throughout the Old Testament, you know, once Israel is neglecting the most vulnerable in their society, especially widows and orphans, you see God's anger come out, you see God's judgment. If, if we read in Deuteronomy, it specifically says like, if you trespass the land of the widow or the orphan, you know, your descendants will suffer. It's just this very like harsh language. And pretty much in the book of Jeremiah, everything hits the fan because they have lost sight of the Torah, God's word. They are not taking care of the most vulnerable in their society. They are completely neglecting, you know, the sacredness of, of human life. And they also actually end up engaging in child sacrifice, which is something that some ancient religions practice. But so it's a very graphic and it's very disturbing. And basically the prophet Jeremiah is looking very truthfully at the state of Israel. And he starts warning Israel, saying, because of your sinfulness and because of your lack of faithfulness to the God of Israel, something is going to happen and you will deeply regret what's going to happen. And he prophesies that, that the Babylonian empire, which is, you know, the next big empire, the bad kid on the block. He prophesies that they will take over and conquer Israel because of Israel's unfaithfulness. So then the next chapter is chapters 25 and 29. And basically Jeremiah starts condemning all the, the leaders of Israel. There's this other prophet that's kind of like a, like a foil. It's like a English literature term. But there's this other prophet that is pretty much telling Israel that everything will be fine. God will be faithful to Israel. Nothing bad will happen to Israel. And Jeremiah is calling him out, saying, no, something really wrong is going to happen to Israel. Something bad is, is, you know, around the corner. And he pretty much condemns their leadership for not speaking truth, for just trying to appease the kings and just trying to get on everyone's good side and not really speaking on behalf of God. And on behalf of what, what God is, is, is thinking. So in the midst of all that, there's just these few chapters that almost don't seem like they're part of the book of Jeremiah. They come out and it's chap, these stories of hope. And it reads like a series of poems and a little bit of prose. Basically Jeremiah prophesies that God will do something. So these bad things will happen soon. They haven't happened yet, but these bad things will happen soon. And in that process, God will pretty much imprint the Torah on people's hearts. So their hearts will change. And there's this little story in this hope section. And that's where we got our message. That's where, that's, that was what the DS's sermon was on. That's chapter 32, verses six to 15. And that little story is a story about, you know, Jeremiah is stuck in prison because the king Jehoiakim put him in prison because he's prophesying all the stuff that the king doesn't like to hear that, you know, that the Babylonian empire will conquer Israel. So he gets put in jail for saying these things. And while he's in jail, his cousin comes up to him and tells him to buy a plot of land. So we'll look deeper in the passage. But basically there's Jeremiah buys that plot of land and it's a foreshadowing. It's, it's hope that after everything happens to Israel, after all these terrible things happen, one day the land will belong back to Israel. So then that happens. And then the next few chapters, we see King Nebuchadnezzar surrounding Jerusalem, conquering Israel and pretty much taking everybody into exile. And Jeremiah gets captured. And the, this book is unusual that you actually find out how this book was written. So we find out the reason why Jeremiah actually wrote all these books down is because he gets captured and King Jehoiakim threatens to burn all of his writings. And, you know, threatens to kill him and burn all of his writings. So Jeremiah hastily writes everything down. And that's the book that we have, the book of Jeremiah. So he says, I'm going to write down all of the prophecies, all the things that I feel like God has spoken to me, all the things that I am convicted that God is telling me will happen. And he writes it all down. And this is in chapter 36. And that's the book of Jeremiah that we have. So in the middle of the book, we kind of get a picture of how the book was written. And then the last part of the book, it's a condemnation of, so after Israel gets taken captive and gets taken into exile, there are all these other big nations that are big players. So there's Egypt, there's obviously Babylon, there's Assyria. And God is saying, you know, though these nations are very powerful, they're not more powerful than me. And there's a hope that God will bring Israel back to the land. So basically Jeremiah is a book, it's written in the very last decade where Israel is a sovereign nation. And just, you know, in the middle of this book, we see the Babylonian empire come and completely take over Jerusalem and Judah. So, okay, and then we need to back out a little further. In 721, I should have written this in the side, around 721 B.C., the northern kingdom of Israel was taken over by the Assyrian empire. So the Assyrian empire completely destroyed, you know, the temple in Israel, completely destroyed the capital, took their king, you know, exiled all the people in northern Israel. And then there was a southern kingdom, Judah. Judah was the last kingdom holding out. And Judah was, they could, they thought they were safe. And then 200 years later, around five, I think 584 B.C., the Babylonian empire came and took them over. So this is, this book is really a a disillusionment of, of Israel's identity, right? You know, we are God's chosen people. God was going to protect us. And then the Assyrian empire came and completely took them over, took their land, took everything, destroyed everything. And then the finally, you know, Judah was like the, considered the faithful kingdom that God has spared. And then the Babylonians came and completely destroyed the temple and took all the Israelites and scattered them throughout the Babylonian empire. And they served as servants, as slaves all throughout. And then there was a few that stayed, but, but basically this, this book is very kind of sad. But in the midst of that, there is a section where there's hope. And that's, that's the, the passage that we have. So you see this dynamic relationship between God and Israel. And Israel, you know, especially obviously through the prophet Jeremiah, holding out that, you know, Israel has been unfaithful, but, and all these things will happen, but at the same time, God is in control. And I see hope that even after we've been exiled and scattered, that God will bring us back. Right? And history, against all odds, we find out in the book of Isaiah. And Isaiah was written out, you know, over 250 years. Towards the end of the book of Isaiah, we do see that after the Babylonian empire gets conquered by the Persian empire, King Cyrus of the Persian empire allows everyone that was scattered from exile to come back to Israel. So that's just amazing. So if you look at the history of Israel, they usually divided by first temple and second temple Judaism, right? First temple is before the Babylonians came and took them over in like 584. And then around, around, I think 300 B.C. or so, Cyrus, King Cyrus of the Persian empire allows them to come back. You know, and they, they recreate a remnant of people. And this is very rare because, you know, typically once, that's why there are so many tribes, so many people that have, that, that have just married into and just have integrated into whatever culture, took them over, right? So there's, we don't know where the Jebusites are, where the Hittites are, where the Ammonites are, where the Midianites are, right? Because over time, every, every empire that absorbs a tribe or absorbs a culture, they just end up pretty much getting lost into that culture. You know, the, for Israelites, it's just amazing that even though they were, they were pretty much conquered twice, a northern kingdom and southern kingdom, that they ended up able to come back and even to rebuild their temple and to continue to establish their faith. And to continue to keep their faith. So, so it's really, really their story is amazing. It's a really amazing historical story. And what we see in our passage, so we'll look at our passage. Oh, so this is, this is kind of the Bible project, really detailed look at this, the story of Jeremiah. And basically, like I said, chapters one to 24 is the warning and accusation, accusation and warning for Israel. And basically the, you know, marital unfaithfulness, rampant social injustice, you know, doing all of these, all of these things. And then here, verses 26, or chapter 25. So Jeremiah really warns them, the Babylonians are coming. This is, this is not, you know, just something that's a fear, it is going to happen. So he prophesies that Babylonians will come. And then 26 to 25, it's, he's condemning the other leaders of Israel, especially the prophets for speaking false truth and not, not speaking on behalf of God. And then you have in chapters 34 to 45, the siege and destruction of Jerusalem. So he actually, Jeremiah sees the temple, you know, which was so crucial to the Jewish faith. Cause you, because in Judaism, you really believe the spirit of God, the presence of God dwelled in the physical temple. So once the temple gets taken apart and just completely destroyed, what does that say about your faith? Right? What does it say about what you believe? Well, that's why the chapters of 30 to 33 are really important. Because God says, I'm not going to imprint the Torah on stone. I'm going to imprint it on the hearts of my people. So if you see here, right, that's the whole point of chapters 30 to 33. I'm going to put the Torah on everyone's heart. So even if they leave their land, even if their temple is destroyed, what can nobody take away from them? It's there, it's the Torah, it's God's words in their hearts. And that's the change that's going to happen after they get put into exile. And in the story in the sermon, we see that God will bring them back. And they will own the land that they, that they live on right now. And then 46 to 51, it's God's judgment of all these great big nations. God's saying that I am in control, even though there are all these powerful players. In the end, I'm, I'm in control of everything. So just if you see, these are the different sections, just a little bit of a closer look. Okay. So we'll look at the passage, Jeremiah 32, verses six to 15. Now, and I'll read it. Jeremiah said, "The word of the Lord came to me. Hannah Mel, son of Hannah Mel, son of your uncle Shalom, is going to come to you and say, 'By my field that is at Anoth, for the right of redemption by purchase is yours.' When my cousin Hannah Mel came to me in the court of the guard, in accordance with the word of the Lord, and said to me, 'By my field that is at Anoth, in the land of Benjamin, for the, for the right possession and redemption is yours, buy it for yourself,' then I knew that this was the word of God. And I bought the field at Anoth for my cousin Hannah Mel, and I weighed out the money to him, seventeen shekels of silver, signed by the deed sealed, I got witnesses, and weighed the money on scales. Then I took the sealed deed of purchase containing the terms and conditions and the open copy, and I gave the deed of purchase to Baruch, son of Neriah, son of Messiah, in the presence of my cousin Hannah Mel, and in the presence of the witnesses who signed the deed of purchase, and in the presence of all the Judeans who are sitting in the court of the guard. In their presence I charged Baruch, saying, 'Thus the Lord of hosts, the God of Israel, thus says the Lord of hosts, the God of Israel, take these deeds, both this sealed deed of purchase and this open deed, and put them in the earthenware jar in order that they may last for a long time. For thus says the Lord of hosts, the God of Israel, houses and fields and vineyards shall again be bought in this land.'" Okay. So in verse, in chapters 32, just at the, just before the destruction of Israel. So the destruction of Israel, so this is chapter 32, the destruction of Israel comes at verse, chapter 34. So just before that, like I said, Jeremiah is stuck in prison. And basically he has this, you know, he has this, kind of this foreshadowing. And he has this word that, you know, his cousin is going to come and tell him to buy this land. And while he's in prison, that exact thing happens. And what happens is back, back in the day, one of the ways that they, you know, so there, there wasn't like official notarized, you know, deeds of land. So the way that they made, you know, deeds official is you had family members and you had a whole group of people surrounding you. So when you signed a deed, you know, the fact that you would have all these different witnesses, it would make it very hard to say that they all fabricated it or they all made something up. So that was kind of like the official way of doing it. You need to have a group of witnesses in order for, when you sign a deed. So you would have, that's like your verification, right? So basically his cousin says, you know, I guess they're, they're of the tribe of Benjamin, right? And all of Israel, all the people in Israel, they're from, you know, the 12 tribes. You're one of the 12 tribes. And each of the 12 tribes were allotted a piece of land. So they're allotted a piece of land. And what's interesting about the tribe of Benjamin, the tribe of Benjamin is a northern tribe. So that's actually, you know, that's actually the land that was taken over by the Assyrians. His family members, I guess his, you know, that's, that's the tribe where he's from. And his cousin said, why don't you buy this group of land, you know, from your tribe, from the tribe of Benjamin? And as he got the word, the word was fulfilled when his cousin actually came to him in prison and told him to do this. So he does, and he is able to, I guess, get out of prison for a little bit. And he has a group of witnesses. And then he signs a deed and he tells them to, he tells his family member to put it in an earthenware jar. So just like a big stone jar to, to keep it safe. And the whole exchange, this is like the only, one of the very few prose. If you read Jeremiah, it reads, you know, some of it is prose, but a lot of it reads like poetry. But this little story is inserted in the middle of this book to show that one day, what happened in the, the exchange with Jeremiah, that will happen after the exile. Meaning that the Israel, Israelites will be able to come back to their land and they'll be able to own their own land. So that, that symbol of that deed being put in that earthenware jar, so it will last a long time. Cause it's true, a couple hundred years later, you know, that, you know, those, that deed will still be there in that earthenware jar, when everybody is able to come back and they're able to own their own land again. So this is, you know, a story of hope, right? In the midst of terrible circumstances, in the midst of terrible circumstances that are happening at the moment. But even in the midst of impending things that you know, that are going to happen, that are very terrible. Yes, all those things are going to happen around the corner. It's going to be very difficult. But there's hope. And, you know, God will bring us back. God will, there, God is teaching us something throughout this experience. And so that's, that's basically what, what this little passage is about. You know, the, the key, I think in the whole book is this verse 15. "For thus says the Lord of hosts, the God of Israel, houses and fields and vineyards shall again be bought in this land." And then you have everything that happens. But that, that verse really carries throughout. And if we look throughout history, it's true, they do come back and they're able to own and live in the land that God has given them. So that is Jeremiah. And I hope one day we can go through the book because it's just so rich. It's, it's really not a lighthearted, it's really not lighthearted reading, but it's, you know, it's very rich and very beautiful. Okay. So we are going to go to John, chapter two, verses one through 11. So for this past Sunday's message, and I don't, I don't know if, if everybody was able to listen to it. For our lectionary for this year, so year, I think it's year C. Basically, the, the book of John is kind of scattered throughout the lectionary. So this is like one of the lucky weeks. Cause there's, you know, if we look at the lectionary calendar, it's A, B, and C. A is Matthew, B is Luke, and no, no, B is Mark and C is Luke. So, okay, now we're in Luke. But the book of John doesn't have its own lectionary season. It gets scattered throughout the lectionary, all throughout the lectionary years, all three years. So this past week, we, we got lucky, we got a John passage. And in the season epiphany, this is actually a really important passage because it's one of the first miracles, public miracles of Jesus. So the, the book of John is quite different from the other gospels. So the, you know, the other gospels, Matthew, Mark and Luke, they call those the synoptic gospels because they're all very similar. And, and they all kind of come from, they all have similarities. So the theory is, you know, Mark is the main source gospel. There's this theory that there's this other gospel Q. And so Luke and Matthew are drawing their gospel from Math, uh, Mark and the gospel of Q. We don't know what Q is, but it's, they're very similar. John is a little bit of an outlier because John is, follows a completely different format. And the way it's written is completely different. It's much more, it's much more, I think poetic. It's, it reads more like a short story than it, than the other gospels. The other gospels look more like historical, I guess. But it, but I feel like John really reads like a love letter to Jesus. You know, it's very high in Christology, it's very high in, you know, showing, trying to show its reader that Jesus is God. And that's where the gospel of John kind of stands out. So anyways, so after, you know, in John chapter one, we have this clear, beautiful poetry about who Jesus is, right? You know, you know, in the beginning was the word and the word was with God and the word was God. And you get the sense that all of, you know, as we know, the Trinity, there's three persons, but they're all one. But John, in the beginning, when he says that in the beginning was the word and the word was with God and the word was God, you get the sense that Jesus is the personified person of all of God's words, of everything that God wants to express is embodied in the person of Jesus. So I think our passage where, you know, it shows Jesus as that, you know, as God in that form, and then we go straight into this miracle that he shows. It gives another dimension as to how Jesus is God and the type, and exactly what God is showing, the aspect of, of God that is revealed through Jesus as the second person of the Trinity. So if we read here, and I'll just read the passage. So John, chapter two, verses one through 11. "On the third day there was a wedding in Cana of Galilee, and the mother of Jesus was there. Jesus and his disciples had also been invited to the wedding. When the wine gave out, the mother of Jesus said to him, 'They have no wine.' And Jesus said to her woman, 'What concern is that to you and to me? My hour has not yet come.' His mother said to his servants, 'Do whatever he tells you.' Now standing there were six stone jars for the Jewish rites of purification, each holding 20 or 30 gallons. Jesus said to them, 'Fill the jars with water, and they will be filled,' and they filled them up to the brim. He said to them, 'Now draw some out and take it to the chief steward.' So they took it, and when the steward tasted the water, it had become wine and did not know where it came from, although the servants who had drawn the water knew. The steward called the bridegroom, one second, and said to him, 'Everyone serves the good wine first, and then the inferior wine after the guests have become drunk. But you have kept the good wine until now. Jesus did this, the first of his signs in Cana of Galilee, and revealed his glory, and his disciples believed in him. After this, he went to Capernaum with his mother, his brothers and his disciples, and they remained there for a few days.'" Okay, I went to verse 12. Okay. So basically, this is, you know, the first of, you know, Jesus's miracles. And we see, you know, he has called his, you know, first disciples. He's just starting his ministry and he hasn't done any public miracles yet. So weddings were very important, you know, back in this time period because it was the only time because it was the only time where anybody celebrated anything. Um, and it, the infant mortality rate, like I said in the sermon, was, is fifty percent. So if you got to this age where you were able to get married, it's like you beat all odds. Um, the mortality rate, I think, after twelve was like thirty percent. You know, it's, cause there's so many diseases, so many things, you know. So even if, you know, you lived to, you know, eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, wh- which is around the time where uh people got married, because the life expectancy was like forty. You know, if you live to forty, you're, you're very lucky. Um, so people got married very young, but if you got to that age where you're like eighteen and you can get married, that was such an incredible feat, you know, that you lived to that point and you were able to get to this milestone. And weddings typically happened starting from Wednesday to Saturday, right? So it was a like ongoing party. And basically, the groom, the whole year, would build a house for the bride. Um, if he was able to literally build a house, like brick by brick, you know, build the house throughout the year. And when the house was done, that's when they had their wedding, cause they had a place to live now. Um, and from there, the groom was responsible, or the groom's family was responsible for providing all the wine. And the wife's family would provide, you know, a dowry or something to get them started in their new life. Um, so right now, they're in Cana of Galilee, really small town up north. So this is Galilee, way up north. And, you know, they have this celebration, and you could just imagine, people literally camping out at their place, right? All these people are staying there, you know, for days, eating and drinking and celebrating. And, you know, we don't know exactly what day, but, you know, it might have been second, second day or so. Um, we don't know. The wine runs out, and this is really a social catastrophe, because it shows that, you know, the groom didn't provide or didn't meet the standard. Um, cause basically, you know, he he's supposed to provide the house, and he's supposed to be able to provide more than enough for the wedding and the guests. So Mary understands this, and she just mentions to him, "They have run out of wine." And Jesus seems to respond disrespectfully. He says, "Woman, what concern is that, you know, to you and to me?" Um, but in the ancient kind of, in Hebrew, it doesn't sound disrespectful. It's just saying, you know, it's it's not derogatory like it sounds in English. Um, but he's basically saying, you know, "Why, why do you concern me?" And this theme of "my hour has not yet come", that theme of Christ's hour, right, really frames all of the gospels, especially in the book of Mark. Um, but we do see it also in the book of John. It's this idea that there's a limited time, that Jesus's ministry is kind of like an hourglass, right? And we know, you know, that, cause if we read the gospels, we know that the ticking time, right, the time, the hourglass going down is Jesus dying on the cross and resurrecting. And we, there's a certain uh series of events that happen. And we see throughout, especially the book of Mark, him saying, "My hour has yet not yet come." He tells people, "Don't tell people that this miracle came from me. Don't tell people that I I healed you and this." Because there's a series of events that need to happen at an appropriate time, so that Jesus dies at the appropriate time. You know, all the events come together. When does he die? He dies at Passover, right? So there is kind of this series of events that have to fall into place at the right time. So everything happens according to when it's supposed to happen. Um, but this particular miracle, Jesus, you see that he doesn't want to right out do this, because there's a series of time. But at the same time, this miracle that he does doesn't interrupt the time, because nobody really knows. You know, if we look closely at this miracle, it doesn't really reveal Jesus's identity. It's only us and the author, uh, the disciple that wrote it down. Now we look at it and we could see the miracle. But at the time, you know, Jesus didn't want to make it public. But he, then he ends up doing it in a way where it's not public, but the miracle happens. So, you know, he says, "My hour is not yet come." And Mary ignores that, and she just says, "Do whatever he tells you." So you get the sense that he says these things a lot, but then she says, "Do something," and he can still do it, cause he he's Jesus and still be in the appropriate timeline. So then he tells um the servants, there are six jars, stone jars, and this is for the Jewish rites of purification. So basically, um, according to the Levitical law, they have all these rules about washing your hands, washing your pots and your plates and all that kind of stuff. And this was a spiritual thing. Um, it was a spiritual ritual, but it's interesting, because basically, it was good that they did that, because it got rid of bacteria and and things like that. Um, so they have these huge jars, and each of them carrying between twenty to thirty gallons. So I had to picture my sermon. They've, they've archaeological, you know, digs have dug these jars up, and they're huge. Um, and basically, they can hold, all six of them, that's between, you know, hundred twenty, hundred thirty gallons of water. And he tells them nonchalantly, these servants, you know, fill them up with water. So that would require a lot of work, because they would have to take another bucket or jar that was probably pretty big, and they'd have to go to the well, you know, fill that with water, and, you know, carry it over, dump it into the jar, you know, and back and forth, back and forth. Who knows where the well is, you know? If it, even if the well was right there, it would have been a lot of tedious, back, backbreaking, never-ending, seemingly never-ending, laborious kind of work. Um, but what's really interesting is they believe him, and they actually do it, and they fill it to the brim. So this is just incredible faith. Um, and one of the things that's, that we have to note is, you know, back then, wine was diluted. It was diluted ten parts to one. So they could just fill it up, you know, the up to tenth, right? Up to almost like nine parts and get wine from somewhere, pour it in, and that's, their problem is solved, right? Because back then, they didn't have purified water, you know, or whatnot. So they would dilute wine, ten parts water, one part wine. Or nine parts water, one part wine. Um, so, you know, for me, when I think about this passage, and that's what I was kind of sharing in the sermon, you know, I would, if I was one of those servants, I would get up to that nine parts and I'd say, you know, I'm I'm just gonna take care of this, because there's no way, you know? Um, but really, they have faith, and they fill it to the brim with water. Um, and they, so they do that. And then Jesus, again, right, nonchalantly, now draws them out and take it to the chief steward. So they take it, and all we know is that when the steward drinks it, it's wine, it's no longer water. And we really have to look at, you know, all of miracles of Jesus, somebody believes something, right? If I were Jesus, I would just go to the town square and say, "Everybody be healed of their sicknesses." And everybody would then know that I'm the Son of God, right, or that I'm divine. But Jesus doesn't work like that. You know, every miracle that he does, somebody believes something. It requires faith on behalf of somebody. And we really see that in this miracle, it was the faith of the servants. Because without a doubt, you know, without even complaining or asking or wondering, they just fill it up with water, and then they obey, they give it to the steward. And in that process somewhere, when they draw it out with the ladle and walking it over to the head waiter, it's suddenly wine. And it's not just diluted wine, it's real wine, and it's, you know, good wine, and it's the best quality wine. So the steward is, you know, he's shocked, and he says, you know, he calls the groom and he says, you know, "I've never seen, nobody does this." You know, everybody gives the worst wine. It's probably twenty parts water, one part wine by that point. Everybody's drunk, nobody could tell the difference. You bring out the the worst wine by that point, but you have saved the best wine for last. And, you know, nobody, this doesn't expose Jesus, it doesn't expose him at all. But the servants of Cana know um who Jesus is. And and I think that's really the truth behind this passage, right? It's, it's really, I think, oftentimes the faith of the people behind the scenes, you know, that just work, that just obey, that just do the little kind of tedious, laborious things. And, you know, they may at some point have asked, "Why am I doing this? I don't know." There's no, there's no why, there's no real logical understanding. You know, "Why am I bringing this water?" Like, it doesn't make sense. Um, but just obeying and just being faithful. And they filled that to the brim, and I really, in my message, I said, "That's a hundred percent of faith." Right? And um for me, I often do a certain point, I give a little bit of faith, but then the rest of the jar, I wanna fill it myself, and I wanna solve the problem myself. But I really think, and this is something, um, I I wish I shared in the message, but I didn't. I really think that when the miracle happens, right? It's the servants of Cana that experience the supernatural, right? It's when you know God is working, and you know God is moving, and you see it, it's the people behind the scenes that have worked day after day, month after month, just being faithful, year after year. It's really this, those people that see God moving and doing something. When God see, does a miracle, it's really those people uh behind the scenes that experience it. You know, everyone else just sees, oh, whatever, right? Um, tho- those that just, you know, just, just come by, just for the fun, you know, just for the wedding, just for the party. Um, they they don't really see, you know, they may just have a good time, but they don't really see the supernatural, they don't really experience the divine. Um, and and I think for for me, that's what this passage means. And it's really meant that for me, uh, during this pandemic, you know, I think oftentimes, I just do things, right? And um whatever it may be, I'm like, "Why am I doing this?" You know, "What's the point? I don't see, especially during COVID, I don't see the fruit, I don't see the the point." You know, I I don't, I don't think people care. Um, you know, but I think for me, the passage is saying, you know, give a hundred percent of faith, just be faithful, and let God let the miracle happen.